So, we have Michael Smith on the phone, so we can go ahead and get started. So, I'll call this meeting to order. And to terminate conversations. And so, welcome everyone to the regular board meeting. And roll call is those present, our trustees Wake and Sturbis, Duggar, Kendall, Decker, Mike Smith by telephone, Holland and Lorenzen. And we believe that he's on his way. And so, the next item on the agenda is the -- if we can stay.
(Music) To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
... and approve the agenda. The items are elementary-only items. So, because Mike has other obligations going on right now, if we can move them forward, we'll talk about them after 6:00. It would be 7A1, 75, and 3 will require approval of the elementary. And we have a -- else. Does that -- okay. First minutes from July 10th that begin on page 6 is their motion to -- first, are there any corrections?
Monday, August 20th, 6:00 PM in this room. Tonight's agenda will continue in form and substance. There may be some minor alterations to the numbers when we arrive at the meeting Monday. I would also note that since we are hosting a special meeting on Monday, August 20th, we will be canceling the second regular meeting of the trustees, which would normally be Tuesday, August 28th. Also remind you that the start of school is around the corner. Tuesday, August 28th, Seeley Swan High School will kick off the school year with 9th grade students only. Then Wednesday, August 29th, kindergarten through 9th grade students and all students at Willard Alternative High School and 10th through 12th grade students at Seeley will kick off the school year. Then finally, 10th through 12th grade students at our urban high schools will start Thursday, August 30th. So, we're excited, two more weeks to prepare and looking forward to initiating the school year. I know Melanie is not here tonight, but I do want to note that Melanie has submitted her letter of retirement and will no longer serve as president of MEA. Melanie has accepted a new position with MEA. She'll be a field representative here in the Missoula area, so we'll still see her. She'll still be working with us. But Washington middle school teacher Greg Imhoff will be assuming the leadership role as president of the Missoula Education Association effective September 4th. So, I had hoped Melanie would be here. I certainly want to express my appreciation to her. Our relationship goes back many years. She served as a teacher at Chief Charlo when I was there, and I have tremendous respect for the work that she's done. And I know it's a difficult job, but I appreciate her willingness to collaborate and problem solve. And certainly, she's been a great advocate for the members of her union, and I do appreciate her service and know that members of the unions in Missoula will continue to benefit from her service, but it'll just be a slightly different level of service. So, thank you, Melanie. And that concludes my report.
May I recommend that you use the microphone that the superintendent is using? We're having -- Which is what we usually do, anyway. And so, now is 6B. Any announcements from trustees? Seeing none, then as we have discussed in modifying the order in the agenda, we'll move on to 8A1, which is to approve a grant application summary. And I think Mrs. Robitaille is going to explain about the Montana Cultural Trust Grant.
Yes, thank you. This is a grant applied for by our new Spark director, Sienna Solberg, and it's to coincide and augment our SHAPE grant, which is for professional development. This will provide professional development training for teaching artists to start with. This is a collaborative arrangement, and there's no fiscal commitment from or match from the district. It simply will come through us at this point.
Any questions for Julie? Seeing none, then is there a motion from an elementary trustee to approve the grant application summary found in the packet? Moved by trustee Decker. Is there a second? Seconded by trustee Lorenzen. Is there any board discussion? Trustee Decker?
Just to say that anything that we're able to do to continue to support the great work that Spark is bringing into the schools and make sure that that work continues and expands and that all kids get a ton of access to the arts, that.
Thanks. Any other comments? Any public comment? Seeing none, then all trustees in favor of -- elementary trustees in favor of approving the grant application, please indicate by raising your hand. Mike?
Hi. Excuse me.
And that's unanimous as to the elementary trustees present? And then actually Superintendent Thane pointed out item number 2 under the very next item that is an elementary-only item. And so, he's going to explain why it's an elementary-only item, and so it is a Providence-Montana Health Foundation grant application?
Thank you. As you know, the district has endeavored to combat the tragedy of suicide that we've experienced way too many times as a community. We have trained staff in assist and which is applied suicide intervention training, in QPR, which is question, persuade, and refer, and signs of suicide. We have also recognized that it's important to begin early, and early intervention is the key to success. So, the PAC's Good Behavior Game is the elementary effort to begin addressing suicide awareness and prevention through, again, pro-social interventions, you know, dealing with emotional regulation, et cetera. The grant application to the Providence Foundation was actually approved already. They have agreed to fund to the tune of $25,000 to support implementation of the Good Behavior Game in our primary grades. And that is something that was reviewed and recommended not only by the state, but also by our committee, our mental wellness committee. And so, Carol Ewen had generated the application. We wanted to come back around to the trustees, not only to inform you of the support from Providence-Montana Health Foundation, but to seek your approval before we formally accept the grant award.
Any questions for Superintendent Thane? Seeing none. Is there a motion from an elementary trustee to approve the grant application for the Providence-Montana Health Foundation? Moved by trustee Kendall, seconded by trustee Lorenzen. Any board discussion? Trustee Decker?
I may be wrong, but the Good Behavior Game that I'm familiar with is a classroom management tool, and so I'll be really curious to hear in a year or so, feedback from teachers as to how that's going and what it's doing. My understanding is that it has the potential to be a positive tool, and there's definitely a lot of research behind it. But any classroom management tool that is more about compliance than about supporting pro-social behaviors is -- there's always a risk there. And I'm curious to hear feedback, especially coming from a mental health perspective on the grant.
Any other comments? Seeing none. I'll note, Mike Smith, that Michael Beers is here also, but since you have listened to this much of the board meeting, do you mind sticking around for voting on this, and then we can relieve you, so you can get back to what you were doing?
None at all.
Okay, thanks. So, any public comment? Seeing none, then all elementary trustees in favor of approving the grant application summary for Providence-Montana Health Foundation, please indicate by raising your hand. And Michael Smith?
Hi.
That's unanimous as to all trustees present. And Michael, if you want to hang up, we still have a quorum now for the elementary board.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
So, I leave it to the board's discretion. Do you want to just go back to the rates? Now that we have a quorum of people present without pressing time considerations, we could go back to 7A1, if that's okay with everyone, and just continue with the agenda as it has been set? Seeing nods around the table, then we'll move back to A1, which is to approve the second reading of the Board Policy 3416, which is Administration of Medication. Superintendent Thane will remind us that we have looked at this at a prior meeting, and we're looking at it.
Certainly. So, the board previously approved on first reading an update to Board Policy 3416. The major change, actually, there were two changes, but the major change was to add language regarding the administration of opioid antagonists, which is permissible due to legislative action. There's a training program, and we've had a number of our secondary administrators and nurses participate. And the opioid antagonist would actually be provided to the district at no charge at this point in time through a state grant. The policy's been out for public comment and review, and we've received no public comment. The administration therefore recommends adoption of Board Policy 3416, administration of medication on second reading.
Any questions for Superintendent Thane? Seeing none, then is there a -- sorry, turn back. Is there a motion to approve on second reading Board Policy 3416 titled Administration of Medication? Moved by trustee Wake. Is there a second? Seconded by trustee Sturbis. Any board discussion? Seeing none. Any public comment? Seeing none, then all trustees in favor of approving Board Policy 3416 as it's been amended, which is titled Administration of Medication, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. Then we continue forward to B1, which is a Smart Schools 2020 update. And so, Julie will be providing us with some updates at this point.
Yeah, thanks. I will do just a quick little where we're at right now, currently the projects, really quick, and then I want to introduce Brad Dahl of A&amp;E, who will be presenting the design on the Meadow Hill Middle School project. So, kind of exciting to see that. As you all know, we have 10 projects going on right now. Some are wrapping up, some are just starting off, some are in the middle. And of course, we have schools starting in two weeks. So, we've spent a lot of time over the last couple of weeks, Hultang and myself and the administrators, making sure that things are cleaned up. Custodians are working very, very hard, and couldn't be more proud of the staff getting these schools ready. So, we've been walking them almost on a daily basis, making sure they're clean and that kids don't miss a beat the first day of school. So, that's kind of been our number-one priority, right, over the last couple of weeks, is just making sure we're ready for school. So, before I introduce Brad, would there be any questions on that?
Trustee Lorenzen?
I'm curious about Russell. Is there going to be construction ongoing at Russell during this school year?
No, Russell's scheduled to be wrapping up. There might be some little things with contractors in and out, very similar to what we saw with Franklin and Lowell. But we will be clean, ready to school, or construction will be complete. Site work is looking a little scary to the average eye, but they're assuring me that it'll look a lot different within the next week. So, it'll be -- it'll look a lot different.
Can you just remind me, because it's so hard to keep it in one's head, the timetable for Willard? When?
That's a great question. So, right now, they're telling us they're still looking at the end of October for completion on that project. I toured it on Thursday. It is an amazing building. It's going to be very, very neat. So, we're looking very forward, and then we'll work with how we can transition over to that building. So, maybe mid-year.
Any other questions? I have the same question about Jeanette Rankin. How's that? I wasn't able to attend the tour. I heard it's looking pretty good, but when would students be moving into that school?
So, the completion date on that is October 8th. We plan to, once we can start kind of moving some fixtures and furniture and stuff like that over from the existing Cold Springs, we'll do that. We want to try to get as much in that building as we possibly can before we get a move over there. I think there's some discussion on whether or not to do a mid-year move-in or a Christmas move-in. So, there's -- that discussion's still taking place at this time.
Any other questions before you introduce our presenters?
All right. Great, thanks. So, Brad Dahl is with A&amp;E Architects, and they are the designers on the Meadow Hill project. I think -- and the floor is yours, Brad.
Hear me? There we go. Oh, I didn't do that right here. One second. So, I'm going to give you a quick, high-level overview of Meadow Hill. So, what I first want to point out is the EIT team we worked with. Of all the EIT teams I've worked with, I think this team went above and beyond quite a bit. There was often times we stayed till 7:30, 8 o'clock at night, just trying to figure out how this jigsaw puzzle can go together. It's been -- it's been a challenge, I'll admit, but it's been one of the more rewarding ones, too, when we come to something that we all agree with as a team. So, just to highlight some of the team members there that we worked pretty diligently with. We were sad to see Principal Chris Stevens leave, but we've had great to have Natalie onboard. We're frantically bringing her up to speed, and I think half of what she needs to know is why we made some decisions, so that she can, you know, instill that with the staff later on. So, oops. Just some things we go through. We go through a hopes and fears exercise, which I'm sure some of you have been through on. Sorry, this is not working all of a sudden. I don't know why it's not. There we go. I think I got it. Just some topics on the culture of Meadow Hill. How do we instill it? How do we grow it for the future? And how do we use this opportunity of the school to infuse and just enhance the culture of the school? Same thing with safety and security. Similar things with the maintenance and operations. How do we make this a long-term solution? You know, thinking 30, 40 years into the future, not just what do we need immediately? What's the first cost? What's the long-term cost of the improvements we're making? And so, those are the things we go through with the EIT. We talk quite a bit about -- this thing is skipping. And then we talk about community use. You know, the schools are, as you guys know, the one of the best buildings you can build for a community, and so how do we, you know, create that environment for the neighborhoods, the schools, and create this a place for them to go? So, those are some of the early exercises we went through. And then with those exercises, we create visions. I won't read through all of these. We do have some books and things out that we can get to the board, but these are just some of the ideas that came of it, of what we need to do for student development, what we need to do for the culture, what we need to do for safety and security. And really, what we do is we use these goals or these guiding principles. As we go through design, we bring the EIT back to them. Are we creating these visions or these atmospheres or these facilities that we talked about early in the process? And so, that's what you're seeing here, is just a few of these comments. My favorite day of any of our design processes is when we get to work with the students. So, we took a day. We rolled out Big Butcher paper in the multipurpose room, put the tables down, and we asked the students many questions, but mostly is what will make Meadow Hill a better school? Not for you, or for you, but also for the future students, because you're living there right now. There's no better person you can ask than the users of the facility. So, you know, we often get crazy, wild ideas, but we distill it down from all the comments we get into some themes that we think are purposeful. Some of the things we heard were bigger lockers, lockers for 6th grade, a real cafeteria with daylight, wider hallways, daylight, bigger music rooms, getting the exploratory classrooms together in the same space, nicer bathrooms, water fountains with water bottle fillers was huge, school pride, display spaces, and fitness rooms. Probably the number-one comment we got there was an iPhone charger in their locker, so -- but that didn't make the thing the most. So, here's how this existing school exists right now. I don't think you can see my pointer, but the 6th grade pod is up here, this, and then down to the gym down below, that other kind of octagon. That was built in the 1950s. There was an addition done to the east there, which was in the 70s, and then there was a little bit of connection done at around here at the either ends, these little pods, and then the gym in the 80s. And so, there's a lot of different construction types, a lot of different architecture all coming together. And so, what you see in the blue are the classrooms, the green are the exploratory classrooms, the brown are sort of the fitness, and then the red is sort of what we would consider admin. One of the first things you'll notice is the green, how dispersed the exploratory classrooms were. Are, you know, some of the comments we heard was 6th graders having to walk between by 8th graders to get to the exploratory classrooms was kind of intimidating. So, one of the goals is getting exploratory classrooms together, a major goal. There's a mechanical room right here, like right at that front door. You come in the front door right now, and you just -- that's the most expensive room in the whole school. And so, we made an early decision in the process that we had to save that room. We just didn't have enough money in the budget to, yeah, that gray area right there, to do much with that room. And so, it was tough to work around that room, and we'll show you what we've done with that. So, what we do is we work with the committee in moving around lots of parts and pieces. I apologize. Parts and pieces, we get them very active, and they were starting to trade spaces. If we move this here, what goes here? And ran through a number of scenarios. I think we went through maybe 50 scenarios that we just continually went through over and over, just to, we felt this was important to get it right. What we came to, here's just some different options. We looked at, you know, do we build a new gym to the north, and do we convert the other gym spaces into something else? Do we leave the two gyms and then go build a common space? And do the music spaces consolidate them? Do we tack on the different kind of nodes at the end of the building to add additional classrooms? These were just five of them, just a sample of the different areas we looked at. What we really realized is the one gym to the north, the one gym to the north served a lot of model purposes. It allowed us the opportunity to give them two gym spaces, because we can subdivide it with a curtain, so they can have two gym spaces, but it's also large enough that you can have community events, you can have the music performances in there, you can have and seat the whole school body. Because right now, you currently can't sit the whole school body in the octagon shape the way it is right now. Then what that allowed us to do is take this green space down below where this auxiliary gym, that really works really well for just the volume of it, for orchestra and band rooms. So, we took from the annex, the orchestra room, and so those two rooms live down there with some practice rooms and ensemble rooms between them, and it's buddied up with the music room right next to, which is the band room right now. And then the existing gym, we're going to convert. We're going to keep that volume, but it's going to become the common space. And so, we'll have daylight out to that entry there. It'll still have the volume of that space in there. There'll be a kitchen directly connected to it, so they're no longer bringing food through the hallways and dragging trash outside. And then the admin space, you know, just for the needs that they had, because right now, they're, I mean, they're stuffed in closets, they're stuffed all over the place at that school. So, we tried to consolidate them as much as we could in that red kind of blob right there at the front door. So, the entry will be relatively in the same location, it's just going to be extended out a little further. And if you have any questions, please feel free to interrupt me as you have. So, here's just a quick look at one of the aesthetic renderings of the front face. What we're looking at is, you know, paying homage a little bit to the brick that's on the 1980s addition, and a little bit to the 50s with the brick kind of columns there in the front, but knowing we don't have the amount of money to do brick all around the building, so we've got some metal panel there and some infused with some wood-looking panels there with some glass. So, that's sort of the front look of the front door, what you'll see. This was the gym. It's, I'll be honest, this is not the gym anymore. We've had to, because of budget reasons, go to different materials, and we've got rid of the canopy, but you can just understand that volume in relationship to the 6th grade pod there, what that will look like and feel like back there. This is the, this is a concept, really, of the admin, I mean, of the common space. So, directly behind you would be the glass walls where the, all the glass and different seating. One thing we want to do with the F&amp;E package is really infuse different levels and types of seating, rather than just the long industrial seating, get some different types of seating in there. So, and then just a look at the gym, some sound panels, getting some daylight in there, a lot like we did at Jeanette Rankin as well. This is a little bit outdated site plan, but I just wanted to talk about, you know, the bus lane will stay relatively the same, or will stay the same coming down the street to the west there, and then along the south. We are looking at reorganizing the, sorry, I cannot see where the pointer is when I was reflecting, but, so we are thinking of, we are keeping the parent drop-off the same, but we've, we feel like we've got a safer route. Instead of having the kids get out of their car and walk between cars, we want them to get out on the sidewalk, so it's safer. We've also put a crosswalk in there, right at the middle of the drive line there by the yellow, because we know a lot of parents drop off along Reserve Street, and so giving them a clear path and just drawing attention to that crosswalk with parents and signage to be careful. Safety is a number-one concern here, and so that's what we're trying to do, is really just make it a safer place. But for the most part, it'll function relatively the same.
Can you just remind us how many modular classrooms they had?
Yeah.
And where they used to be?
Oh, they used, well, they used to be up at that, the top-right corner of that parking lot you can see towards the top right. There was, you know, I can't recall off the top of my head how many there were. It was about 8,000 square feet, though, that, or 9,000 square feet, which we've absorbed in the school, as well as adding. We're net to the school, there's an addition of about 9,000 square feet of net, but it's really 17,000 or 18,000 square feet of new, but we're losing the annex, so that's where you see the net. But I think there was probably like six or seven classrooms in there. Just some other views of it. So, right now, we're wrapping up our permit drawings. In fact, we submitted the drawings to the City of Missoula today, or yesterday. Langless, a contractor, onboard. They are bidding some shell and footing foundations for the gym, hopefully with the intent of getting started this October to break ground and get that structure up. And that's where we're at, just wrapping everything up here, and that's the design.
Any questions? I have a question perhaps more for the administration, but what is the transition going to be? Would kids be in school during all this remodel? And kind of the same situation we've got at the other schools where remodeling's going on?
Yes, we will keep the students on site the entire time through the construction process. Early on, we had talked about the potential of using the former Cold Springs building as swing space once those students moved to Jeanette Rankin, but the current phasing plan, I think, would call to keep all those students there. Part of the issue that we found with considering swing space was creating a second lunch program, the need for students that access special education programs to be able to access both those teachers and their classrooms. those teachers and their classrooms, and it just became increasingly important for us to try and keep all kids on site.
You'll notice too, if you go out to the site, that there's a construction fence up now. We've moved the admin space to the multipurpose, we made a new admin space there, just, it's easier to train, I think, parents and student staff on day one versus midway through, and so that's why you'll see that, and it's pretty clear where students and staff and parents are supposed to go.
Thanks. Any other questions? Thank you, thank you for the, kind of the preview of where we're going to be going. I appreciate you being here tonight. Thank you.
If I could just add one more thing, so as Brad just kind of alluded to, we're relocating the main entrance and the administration to a door just to the south of where it's currently at. And we've done some of that through most of our projects over the course of the summer. And then early in the summer, we met with Hatton, and she put together a bunch of brochures for all these buildings that are under construction and sent these out to parents, so parents kind of have an idea of what to expect when they come back, so it won't be a big surprise that we've relocated the main entrance to Meadow Hill. So we want to make sure that our parents have good ample warning to where their kids can be dropped off and where they can access the building from, so just wanted to make sure I shared that.
Any other questions for Burley? Seeing none, this was information only, but if there's any public comment, seeing none, then we'll thank you all for being here and for this kind of exciting move forward. And now we'll move on to item B2, which is to award bids for network switch equipment. And I see from the background information, the board had considered this previously, but there's been a modification made to kind of procure E-rate recoupment, so if you want to explain, Pat?
Yes, thank you. And the original presentation to the board by Ray Cooper was that we would use the WISCA and ASBO Cooperative Purchasing Program. What we did instead was did a formal RFP, given the potential for E-rate reimbursement. So we went through a request for proposal process. Instead, we did receive one bid for Juniper switches, and we're recommending that the trustees authorize the purchase of 36 Juniper switches from Access Consulting, and this is a bond issue funding source.
Any questions for Pat? I have one question, the same one that I'd asked when we were setting the agenda, is that because there was only one bidder, is this in the ballpark where Ray and you and the business office thought it would come in at?
Yeah, it is, it's slightly higher. We always like to have more than one bidder, but it was in the ballpark, but yeah, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, is there a motion to authorize the purchase of the 36 Juniper switches from Access Consulting in the amount of $95,633 moved by trustee Wake? Is there a second? Second by trustee Lorenzen. Any board discussion? Seeing none. Any public comment? Seeing none. Then all trustees in favor of authorizing the purchase of the 36 Juniper switches from Access Consulting in the stated amount, please indicate by raising your hand. And that's unanimous as to all trustees present. Then we move on to B3, which is to purchase smart interactive flat panels. There's a bid that's come in, so it looks like Pat, you'll be explaining what's going on here.
You bet, thank you. So I'll be playing Ray Cooper on this one as well. We had, did not get an opportunity to get in front of the board for permission to issue an RFP, but we, given the timeframe, the fact that we trained some teachers on these smart interactive panels, we issued an RFP and just received those and scored those today. So at the special meeting on the 20th, we'll present a recommendation to the board. So this is information only, just to let the board know that we've got this in the works, and it'll be coming down the pipe next week.
Any questions for Pat? Justice Decker?
We use the word "smart" a lot, but here it's in all caps. Is that a maker, is that a brand, or is that a, so this is the specific set of technology that the teachers were trained on using, and now we have to purchase that specific company's stuff, is that right?
That's exactly right, yep. Yeah, that's the model they were trained on, and it was also reflects the brand that we've been using. It's similar to the Juniper switches that we've got in place as well.
Is there an ongoing cost? Like, is there license, or is there maintenance, or just curious?
Superintendent Payne, you have a comment?
I would just say with regard to smart, they went out and looked at specs, determined that this was the panel that they wanted to bid, and then the panels, we have some in the district already, Franklin and Lowell in particular. The idea this time around was as we begin to disseminate these around the district, we don't want to just purchase them and assume teachers are going to get trained and use them. So instead, an invitation for teachers to receive the training was issued, 45 exercised that option to train, and now those are the 45 teachers that will get the panels, and we'll continue, again, based on previous determination that this is the product that we wanted to specify.
Hatton, did you want to add something?
I was just going to offer that this company does make software, but it would be up to Ray Cooper in her capacity to speak to whether or not we are going to have an ongoing licensing agreement for the software.
Any questions for anybody? Trustees?
I just had a comment that I was here when they were doing the training, because I was talking to Ray, and examples of are these are here, so I'm just kind of curious to see what they are. And the teachers seemed very excited being trained on them, so.
Any other comments? I was going to make the same comment, because I happen to be in a building too, and the teachers looked quite engaged, really engaged, so. It's information only, but any public comment? Seeing none. Then we'll move on to four, which is the proposed 2018-2019 budget. So, Pat, a preview of what we'll be discussing on Monday?
Yes, thank you. So information only, and very much a preview, it's also information that the board has seen before. The state statute requires the board to meet on or before August 20th to consider the adoption of the budget, and to do so by August 25th. So as Mark mentioned earlier, there's a special meeting scheduled for Monday, the 20th, to consider the budgets and to adopt those budgets and to set the levies for those budgeted funds. The information that I've provided is up to speed, up to date for the general fund, but is not so for the other budgeted funds. It's last year's information, but I wanted to provide the spreadsheets and the resolutions just so they'd be familiar information. If you look on page 17, this is a summary of the general fund budget projections for this year for FY19. It's a document you've seen on numerous occasions. I'll point out what's changed since we last looked at it together. So on page 17, we estimate savings associated with retirements, and so that number does change as the year progresses, and it's changed here for both the elementary and the high school. We anticipate, estimate, I should say, $22,000 of savings for certified staff, and that just means the staff that we hire to replace retiring teachers is going to cost about $22,000 less than the retiring teacher. And so we make that estimate, and that's what's reflected there. About down in the middle, under additional obligations, I think this was here before, but I'll point it out, the student transportation budget, I've mentioned before, this is our athletic budget, our MHSA, and our FFA budget, which we've seen some expenditures in excess of budget, and we're trying to boost and build that budget up. Here, we're supporting that with a decrease in utilities. And frankly, it's something where we rely upon the available budget balance in utilities to support that area anyways, we're making it more formal in this recommendation. Under reductions, the bottom area there, that bottom box, we learned that we had a boost in our Title II allocation, we use that as, under a class size reduction, and so those funds are used to pay certified staff. And here, that increase is helping the high school out, and the high school budget, as you know, has been a bit of a challenge this year. We've also are proposing utilization of some one-time-only funds, including the work comp credit and Medicaid funds that are reflected there to help boost the high school side. We've realized some, and are recognizing some position savings, this would be relate to, under, overestimating costs of lane movement, we won't know where the certified staff moves until September, so we did a little bit better here, and so I'm recognizing it here, as well as some estimates of position savings that are all encapsulated in that $40,000. And then we also move some tech expenditures that can be funded and are proposed to be funded in the tech fund, and that's that $40,000 on the high school side to help with the high school piece. And finally, an interlocal with the elementary that helps get to a zero point on the high school, high school side. With respect to interlocals, we do not tap into that resource unless we have to, and we haven't had to. So this is more reflected as a way for us to budget. It would happen at the end of the year, it hasn't happened thus far, so we'd only use it if we had to. The very bottom piece is Senate Bill 261, this is the revenue that the state did not fund, the data for achievement payment. It's built in the budget, but it's not funded, so we have not planned to cover that cost. From a budgeting standpoint, we would depend and rely upon savings in our budget throughout the year to cover that cost, so that's just reflected. You'll see the elementary's a bit of a positive balance, so we're already working to solve for that shortfall in revenue. And that's the projections. The next page, and this is all for the general fund, it's the general fund revenue sources, really a useful piece of information, because the general fund with its funding formula kind of gets to be a little complicated, and I think this is a good way to demonstrate where the funding sources are at and expected to be at, and the difference in those funding sources. And most interesting for us, if you look about five lines down on the elementary, you'll see the base levy and then the overbase levy. Those two items represent the local taxpayer's share of the funding for the general fund, and you'll see that between the two, on the overbase side, we passed a $305,000 levy, on the belowbase side, we had a reduction of about $617,000. So that's a net reduction in taxpayer burden on the general fund elementary of about $313,000. On the high school side, similar same-line items, we ran and passed an overbase levy of $169,000, and then on the base side, we will anticipate seeing a reduction in the base funding of $655,000, so a net reduction of local taxpayer support of $485,000 on the high school side. So jumping to page 19, translated, that information means, if you look on the top sheet, or the top line, that's the only one that's updated. The other information is for budgeted funds that are from last year, last year's information. But if you look across the top, you'll see the decrease in the levy of $312,000, that means a reduction in mils of 2.7, and a reduction in tax cost of $7.26 in a $200,000 home. And then the page 20 has similar information, it shows what the tax impact would be on the high school side, a reduction of $6.40 and 2.37 mils. The other information on those two sheets, we'll update, it'll show the levy increases or decreases, the tax impact, and then beginning on page 21 and 22, it'll be summarized for the board, the final budgets and the levy amount to support those final budgets. Again, the only one that's updated is the general fund at this point, and actually here, this is just last year's information. The resolutions are required when we're, the board's adopting the budget and increasing property tax revenue, and that's what those next five pages reflect, is our resolutions for budget adoption. So I added those to the mix, so the board could see those as well. That's all I had for a preview.
Thanks. Any questions for Pat? Trustee Lorenzen?
Yeah, back on the first page, we have an anticipated obligation on page 17, for the utilities for Missoula College, and I see the total then $30,000. Is this something that we didn't have until this year as an obligation, and is there any upside to this, or is this pure cost?
So this is cost, and it is something that we incorporated last year, and I want to say, at the time that we adopted the budgets, that we didn't feel like the increase to the utilities was necessary, because we could cover it. And so it was reflected on the sheets, but wasn't included. The utility cost for the former Missoula College building is, will be higher than this. This is just reflective of some, of the increase that we're expecting we should make to cover that cost. So it would be something that would be an ongoing obligation for the gas and electricity.
Any other questions for Pat? Seeing none. Thanks, Pat, for that update, and we'll be talking about it in more detail on Monday.
Thank you.
Any public comment? Seeing none, then we'll move on to five, which is to approve the Resolution 2019-1E, which is authorizing the sale or disposal of furniture equipment and other undesirable or unsuitable items, and this is an elementary action item, and then the next item is for the high school. We see this every year about this time, so Pat, anything unusual or to update us on this process?
Not really, this, we try really hard to avoid having this very used furniture and equipment end up in the landfill, so we hold a public sale. If we don't have takers at a public sale for this, these items, then we try and give it away to schools, and then we try and also give it away to Home Resource and Goodwill. And so usually, and Burley can attest to this, these items that are ending, up in this sale are by and large just really on the verge of the landfill. They've been exhausted, so. This gives us the ability to hold some sales that, and really per Montana law and per our practice, we give the public and the taxpayer the opportunity to buy these items, so that's the main point. That's it.
Any questions for Pat? Seeing none, then is there a motion from an elementary trustee to approve the Resolution 2019-1E, which authorizes the sale of, it sounds like the land of misfit equipment, in the manner in which Pat just described? Is there a motion? Moved by trustee Kendall, and second by trustee Decker. Is there any board discussion? Trustee Decker?
I know that this has come up before, and that I really appreciate the district's statements about commitment to sustainability, and I'm sure that the new person who's been identified with Home Resource is aware of this process and opportunity, and in thinking about zero waste, this is part of their audit.
Right. Any other comments? Seeing none, any public comment? Seeing none. All elementary trustees in favor of adopting the attached Resolution 2019-1E, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all elementary trustees present, and then we move on to item number six, which is the comparable Resolution 2019-1S, which provides the same authorization to sale or dispose of the furniture equipment and other undesirable items. Anything to add on this one? Any questions for Pat? Seeing none. Is there a motion to authorize, approve the Resolution 2019-1S, which authorizes the sale of the items described? Moved by trustee Sturbis, second by trustee Wake. Any board discussion? Seeing none. Any public comment? Seeing none. Then all trustees in favor of adopting the Resolution 2019-1S, please indicate by raising your hand. And that's unanimous as to all trustees. And that's unanimous as to all trustees present. Then we move on to two parallel topics as well. The first is to award bids for Sentinel High School furniture and fixtures and equipment. And the background information indicates that there were three different bid packages that had a low bid. One is for office, one is for classroom, and one is for commons. And so Pat, do you want to, is there anything to point out or add to that?
No, it's very self-explanatory. We put this out as Sentinel Project continues to phase, we'll have the FFNE that are going into those new spaces ready to go.
Any questions for Burley? Seeing none. Is there a motion to approve awarding the above, to the above referenced vendors, the bid for Sentinel High School's furniture, fixtures, and equipment? Moved by trustee Kendall and second by trustee Service. Is there any board discussion? Seeing none. Any public comment? Seeing none. All trustees in favor of awarding the above, to the above referenced vendors, the bid for the Sentinel High School's furniture, fixtures, and equipment, please indicate by raising your hand. That's unanimous as to all trustees present. Then now we're on to eight, which is to grant permission to solicit bids to remove some hazardous materials from the district administrative office. So Burley, do you want to tell us what's going on there?
Yeah, thanks. So this is, this is the old Missoula College, so it would be the closest building to us, which I'm referring to is Building A or the north building. That project, we'll put that out for bid this Sunday if approved. And there is, there's quite a bit of asbestos in that, in that building. It's basically in most of the drywall, the pipe insulation, and floor tiles. So there's quite a bit of it in there. And this is just kind of Phase 1.0 to getting that building in a condition where we can remodel it so we can get administration moved over there. And we had a hazardous material assessment conducted, and we'd like to look forward to probably abating this in October.
Any questions for Burley?
What is SB 307? Is that your same question?
I apologize. I meant to touch base and my glasses weren't on anymore, I can't see it. Senate Bill 307, it's a building reserve permissive levy that's funded by the state. So we get, we approve those, we approve those projects through the board, which then go to the state, and those funds are permissive levied. So, and Pat, if you want to...
They're not state funds. It's an authorization that allows trustees to permissively levy for projects. And what the board did in March was, or we provided to the board in March, was an estimate of the funds that we would permissively levy within the building reserve for these projects. And so when the board adopts budgets in next week, this will be included as a subline item under the building reserve fund as part of those funds that were authorized back in March.
Trustee Lorenzen, did you have a question?
I guess to be, put a point on it, these are not bond funds. No bond money's been used for this, right?
No, that's correct.
Any other questions?
Sorry. And this is built into the budget and the levy amounts that we just looked at as far as the budget, or this is a separate, so the nice numbers of taxes going down for people?
That stays the same because it's in the general fund. But those numbers that we looked at, which were for last year, will be virtually the same in the high school, and it will go up by a hundred thousand in the elementary, I believe. That's what those will reflect. So the, that'll be the levy increase for this permissive levy piece. And so those numbers you saw were for last year, but we will update it for this coming year.
Any other questions?
These specific funds can only be for certain projects, isn't that true? It has to be something about, something that was previewed like years ago? Wasn't that the case?
Yeah, the original intent of the statute was to address those high priority items that were identified in that condition assessment report the state did in 2004. And then the, by virtue of the fact that that assessment report is so old, that I talked to Lance Mellet at MTSBA, because some of what we had on our assessment report for properties that were either getting fixed through the bonding process or what have you. So what has to happen with those, that report, is the school district needs to update it by 2019, by next year. So we have, what we're presenting to the board would be our priority of list based upon those same standards. It's safety and security, it's deferred maintenance, and that level of project. But that's exactly right.
Any other questions? Okay. No more questions, then is there a motion to grant permission to remove the hazardous materials from the district administrative, district administration office, formerly known as the Missoula College? Such a motion? Moved by trustee Service. Is there a second? Second by trustee Kendall. Any board discussion? I guess I just have one comment. I hope that this is one of the last buildings that we're dealing with in terms of asbestos abatement, so, okay. Any other comments? Any public comment? Seeing none. All trustees in favor of granting permission to solicit bids for the removal of, excuse me, hazardous wastes, or hazardous materials associated with the construction project at the district administration building. And just to be clear, this is the former Missoula College building where the administration would be moving to. All those in favor, indicate by raising your hand. And that's unanimous as to trustees present. Thanks. Then we move on to nine, which is to grant permission to solicit bids for the re-roofing of the south building at the district maintenance office. So is this, which, which building is this, Burley? Okay.
So, yeah, this is the south building of the district administration offices. We had CTA roof, they have a roofing department came in and assessed the roofs on both of the buildings. We'll be repairing the north building that has some life left in it, but the south building is outlived its useful life and needs complete replacement, and we'll be funding that with the same Senate Bill 307 funds. We plan on doing this work in probably March, early April, starting that project, once we start getting some warmer temperatures this spring.
Any questions for Burley? Trustee Decker?
Sorry, again, I don't know if this would be more for Burley or for Pat. When would people be likely to see an impact of this permissive levy on their taxes?
It would be, just as with our other adopted funds, the levy will happen this year, so that once it's adopted in August, then the county soup reviews the district's levy increases, and then that goes to the county. And then they'll include our levy increases in the overall increase in levies that will be assessed. So they'll see it starting this year.
Any other questions? And so I forget, do we have a motion at this point? No, okay. We're still in the question phase. So no more questions. So is there a motion to grant permission to solicit bids for the re-roofing of, and is it just the south district administration office?
It is just the south, yes.
Okay. Is there a motion? Moved by trustee Decker and second by trustee Service. Is there any board discussion? Seeing none. Any public comment? Seeing none. All those in favor of granting permission to solicit bids for the re-roofing of the south district administration office, please indicate by raising your hand. And that's unanimous as to all trustees present. Then we move on to number ten, which is to approve Resolution 2019-2S, authorizing the sale of the Homewell property. Mark and Pat, I don't know who wants to take the lead on this one. We have had discussions about this in the past.
I'll give a brief introduction, then turn it over to Pat. We have had before the trustees a number of times this spring, discussion regarding the Homewell property, which is the property located directly to the north of this building. And South Avenue cuts through the center of the parcel, dividing it effectively into two separate parcels. The previous comments from trustees were that they wanted to make sure we got this in front of the public multiple times, which we've attempted to do. Tonight, we come forward with a formal resolution. If adopted by the trustees, then it would be posted for fourteen days before it becomes effective. The plan that we would put forth is that we would, as a first step, come back to the trustees in September and ask for permission to put out an RFP, a request for proposal, to see if there are entities that would wish to propose uses and either purchase or long-term lease of those properties for board consideration. We would like to constitute a committee, including trustee representation and administrators, to review any responses we get to the request for proposal, so that we could then forward a recommendation to the trustees. We also spoke to you previously about the fact that we wanted a consultant to give us some direction with regard to possible valuation of the property. In conversation with that individual, we decided it's probably not in our best interest right now to get hard appraisal, even though he's an appraiser. He essentially said, what I'd like to do is just take a look at it. Right now, properties associated with Brook Street and close to Brook Street seem to be moving really well. He would like to provide us with information on a range as to what he believes the property should garner, and that would be information that would be available to the committee before reviewing and making any recommendations with regard to the disposition of the RFPs. And I would suggest to you that we, as a district, would like to obviously retain the right to either accept or reject any and all offers that might come through with regard to an RFP. And if we're in fact finding that we're not satisfied with those recommendations, we would come back to the trustees and consider whether we wanted to market the property in a different fashion. So Pat, I don't know if there's anything to add at that point.
I think the only thing I would add is just that the right of way through the property creates a legal division of those two parcels, and so our consultant recommended too that they, that when we do put out the RFP, that we offer them as two separate tracks, two developable parcels.
I just have one. I didn't even notice there's an alley somewhere on the property. Does it go with the north or the south?
Yeah, and I saw that too. I'm not sure where that's at. So we had a title company who, that looked at the, and prepared a preliminary report, and I'm not sure where that alley is too. It's referenced in the legal description of the property. And, but, yeah, I'm not sure where that existed.
Any other questions? Trustee Decker?
I guess I'm just wanting to make sure that I'm understanding what we're voting on or what we're agreeing to tonight. What Superintendent Dean described about a committee that would review possible uses and would have opportunities to thumbs up, thumbs down, to continue to explore a variety of possibilities, that all sounds like the discussions that I remember having and seeing reflected in the minutes, but the resolution that's here doesn't say anything about that. It says that we intend to sell, end of sentence, and that the superintendent, we're essentially authorizing the sale. And so I'm just wondering if this is a matter of legal lease, or, so I'm just a little bit wondering about the difference there.
And what the statute is, addresses sale of property. So your resolution is that. So your ability to lease the property doesn't depend upon adoption of this resolution. So what I'd say is, is this is the resolution that fits within the statute. It's the one that our attorney helped us draft, and it reflects what's required of the statute to authorize the sale. So the next step in that process would be the publishing of, posting of notice, and then that notice sits, it's both published in the paper, the Missoulian, and then it'll be posted for fourteen days. And absent an objection within those fourteen days, then the authority exists, and then what Mark's describing is the next step after those fourteen-day period. So we would, the fact that we would offer the opportunity to lease the property doesn't change this because that's at your discretion, and the choice to ultimately sell will ultimately, that'll ultimately be at your discretion as well. But the RFP can be drafted in such a way to meet the needs of the board of trustees, really, in terms of how this would be offered and made available to the public to purchase or lease.
Any other questions? Trustee Kendall and then trustee Lorenzen?
To follow up on Grace's question, it sounds like there will be a notice sent to the Missoulian, and the property will be posted. And I'm just wondering if in the interest of, you know, greater transparency, if, you know, would it be appropriate in this case to issue a press release or something like that, just to make sure that the news outlets know about this in the, in the reporting, you know, the reporters? Just because what we want is for people to know that this is what we're thinking about doing and give people lots of notice about that.
Yeah, I was just going to ask maybe a clarifying question. Is that, and I think that's a good idea, in terms of clarifying the fact that you're going to explore lease as well, is that the main idea that you're suggesting?
I'm not even thinking that subtly, just, you know, if there's going to be an article in the Missoulian, let's have a press release that says, this is what's happening, we're doing this in accordance with state law. The trustees have reviewed this and have approved it. You know, if you have questions, call Pat.
Okay.
So is it reasonable to say that by passing the resolution, we are allowed to sell, but we're not required to sell? Is that right? Okay.
Any other questions? So I'm going to say it one more time, just to make sure I understand. It sounds like under state law, when you're selling property that's owned by a school district, given the language in here, you have to declare that property is unsuitable for school purposes and hasn't really been used for a school at any time. So the first step in determining what will happen with that property is to pass this resolution, which allows this option to be possible. It doesn't mean that it's going to happen, and in fact, the language in here indicates that it has to be approved by the trustees. So this just lets the public know there's an option to sell it, but I think it's a good idea in a press release to say we're also exploring leasing options as well, just some way so that the assumption isn't that for sure and absolutely positively we're going to sell it, but this is the step we have to take in order to even let people know it's potentially for sale. Is that what this is intended to do?
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks. Seeing no questions, then let me skip back to this part. So is there a motion to adopt the secondary Resolution 2019-2S, which authorizes the sale of the Homewell property under the authority of the Montana statute? It doesn't require it, but it allows it to be a potential opportunity. Moved by trustee Lorenzen? Is there a second? Second by trustee Decker? Is there any board discussion? Trustee Lorenzen?
I guess fundamentally, I worry about selling property. However, and when we first talked about four properties, that made me really uneasy because we were talking about them as a group. And the one property that I don't want to see us sell ever is the land on which the current administration building sits. But I know we can't protect those assets without some cash. And so it also, I know the high school doesn't have any cash. any cash. That, elementary still has it from the sale to Roosevelt. So I, I support selling this because I think we need the cash. Clearly, those new buildings are a burden right now, and we need the cash to protect the other assets. I, I don't think it's realistic to hold on to everything. I think this is the only property, unused property that the high school owns, that the secondary owns. I think everything else belongs to the elementary. So I wanted, I, I'd like to see, you know, so I, I'm not opposed to this, because I think it brings in the money that, to, to balance the secondary contribution to the improvement of the administration buildings. Otherwise, that whole burden falls to the elementary. And in the long term, if we have some cash, we can protect the core in-town elementary properties that I think we have to protect in, for the future, so.
Any other board comments? Trustee Decker?
I just want to say that I really appreciate trustee Lorenzen's loud clarion calls to proceed with all due caution in, in this vein. And I just want to emphasize too, that being transparent and trying as best we can, I know it's difficult, to make sure people know ahead of the fact is, is really critical, because people don't like to feel that they've missed big changes going on to the district, and the sale of any asset is a really big change. And something new being built in an area that didn't use to have that thing on it is a really big change. And the more we can do to make sure that people feel they know, the better, which I know is never a perfect process.
Any other comments? I just have one. I, too, wanted to thank trustee Lorenzen. She actually problem-solved on this in setting agendas and talking about how to bring this forward, and was incredibly thoughtful about how to do it, and came up with a suggestion that I think is very workable in terms of also considering leasing as well as selling, and making sure that we can be as open to the public about the process that we're using. So I do want to thank trustee Lorenzen for, for her participation in this. Any other board comments? Any public comment? Seeing none, then all trustees in favor of adopting the secondary Resolution 2019-2S authorizing the sale of the Homavale property under the authority of the identified statute, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. Then we move on to C1, which is to approve the personnel report. It's, it's the busy time of the year, Dave. Is there anything of note in the attached report that begins on page 30?
There's nothing out of the ordinary, actually. A fairly small report. We did most of the hiring earlier in the summer, and there's still a few positions out there.
No questions on the personnel report? We don't take comments on any particular individuals, but any questions for Dave? Seeing none, then is there a motion to approve the items on the personnel report that's been provided in the packet? Moved by trustee Sturbis. Is there a second? Second by trustee Decker. Any board discussion? Seeing none. Public comment? Seeing none. Then, all those in favor of approving the items on the provided personnel report, please indicate by raising your hand. Is, I couldn't tell if Mike will say, okay. And so that is unanimous as to all trustees present. Then we move, excuse me, on to C2, which is to approve the Montana High School Association Cooperative Sponsorship Renewal Agreement with Loyola Sacred Heart for Wrestling. And these kind of cooperative agreements, we seem to see on a regular basis each year. And so if you want to provide a little background information as to why these cooperative agreements pop up, and why this one with Loyola is a renewal.
Thank you. Well, I'm, my main job here tonight is to introduce to you our newest school administrator in Missoula County Public Schools, Cameron Johnson. He is the new assistant principal at Big Sky. It says athletic director, but the way that we operate in Missoula is we weave those duties within an assistant principal role. So this is Cameron's maiden voyage at the board, so he's actually going to talk about this. And I'd like you to meet Cameron Johnson.
Thank you. I've seen some of you here before. Yeah, we're just here to ask or request board approval for a continuation of the MHSA cooperative agreement with Loyola and our wrestling program. We have now done this for the last, to my knowledge, six years with Loyola. We're also in cooperative agreements with Florence for our cross-country program, and Loyola for our swim program. And what this does is it brings athletes to our programs and helps expand the ranks, and helps makes, helps make us a little more competitive as well in, in different events. So this is not necessarily anything abnormal in that, that regard, so.
Any questions? Seeing none. Well, thanks. So, seeing no questions. Is there a motion to approve the Cooperative Sponsorship Renewal Agreement with Loyola Sacred Heart and Big Sky High School for Wrestling? Moved by trustee Decker and seconded by trustee Kendall. Is there any board discussion? Seeing none. Any public comment? Seeing none. Then all trustees in favor of approving the Cooperative Sponsorship Renewal Agreement with Loyola Sacred Heart and Big Sky for Wrestling, please indicate by raising your hand. And that's unanimous as to all trustees present. And then we get back to some first readings of some board policies that actually really had to do with procedure and which didn't quite fit in. So if you want to, Mark, talk about both of these together, and then we'll have separate votes on them, but they're really kind of connected, so I think it's a more efficient use of the explanation time.
Thank you. And as Chair Holland indicated, the first is essentially a procedure statement that still exists in the board policy manual. And one of the efforts we've undertaken over the last four years is to move procedure statements to the procedures manual. However, in this situation, as required by federal regulations regarding Title I, we need to have specific policies in place. And April 24th, the board adopted a revision to Board Policy 2160, which is titled Federal Funding and Title I. That was ultimately approved, and therefore this particular procedure statement becomes redundant, given the new language. So the administration is recommending that trustees approve on first reading the deletion of the procedures associated with the former Board Policy 2160. We would post for public comment, just as we would for any new policy statement, and solicit public comment. And we intend to bring this back for second reading at the September 25th regular board meeting. The second policy under item number four is related. Again, as required by Title I, we have a family engagement policy. We actually had a family engagement policy in the board policy manual that was separate from Title I also. So again, we had redundant language. We've cleaned that up. And with the revisions, again, that were adopted April 24th for Board Policy 2160, and Board Policy 2159 on parent and family engagement being revised, this policy is no longer necessary. So again, the administrative recommendation would be that we approve on first reading the deletion of Board Policy 4100, family engagement, and authorize it for posting, for public comment. And again, look forward to second reading September 25th.
Any questions for Superintendent Vane? Seeing none. Then we'll move to three first, which is to recommend, or to, a motion that would approve the deletion, or would approve the first reading of the deletion of Board Policy 2160P, and allow, authorize posting for public comment with the understanding that it would be coming back for second reading at the September 25th regular board meeting. Is there a motion to approve, prove it for first reading? Moved by trustee Kendall and seconded by trustee Wake. Is there any board discussion? Seeing none. Any public comment? Seeing none. All those in favor of, let me get back to the words, approving the first reading of the deletion of Board Policy 2160P, and authorizing posting for public comment, please indicate by raising your hand. And that's unanimous as to all trustees present. Then we move on to item number four, which is to approve the first reading of the deletion of Board Policy 4100 and authorize posting for public comment. Is there a motion to do so? Moved by trustee Wake and seconded by trustee Decker. Is there any board discussion? Trustee Decker?
Superintendent Vane made this pretty clear, but in case anybody is following along at home and has a nose for details, we are in no way eliminating a policy about the importance of family engagement in the schools. Before the September meeting, when we actually finalized this, I'm making a note to myself to try to go and double-check all the places that that appears, but, yeah, just making sure. This is, this is a place, it was important to us enough that it appeared in two places. That will only appear in one.
Any, any other trustee comments? Seeing none. Any public comment? Seeing none. All trustees in favor of approving the first reading of the deletion of Board Policy 4100 and authorize posting for public comment, understanding that it would come back for second reading at the September 25th board meeting, and that it, in fact, what is a redundant policy to, a policy that was adopted back in April. I can actually, if you want me to. I actually know what I said. So, do we have a seconded motion? Okay, and board, any board comment other than trustee Decker? Okay, no public comment. So all those in favor of what I just said, and I can repeat it if you want, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. And then we move on to five. Sounds like the substitutes are getting a raise.
The substitute rates of pay that are located on page 39 list all of the different substitute positions we have for both certified and classified employees. And what we decided to do this year is try to bring them all to in one failed swoop. The curricular and instructional rates at the top are actually not subrates, but those are rates that are contractually changed, so they reflect the 2.5% increase from the prior year, which was what we had negotiated. Below, we have, I think I was counting out, 29 different jobs for which we have subs. And of those, there are 11 that we are going to be modifying or changing. So not all of the rates that are shown here are actually modifying. The biggest section, of course, obviously, this is both substitute teachers and the paraeducators. Last year, we changed that and modified it to 1143 an hour, and that is going to actually be the same. That hasn't been changed. The categories that have been modified are essentially in the O and M department, where recommended by Burley McWilliams, and then Stacy Rossmiller, our food service supervisor. So those positions, so with some clarity that are actually changing or increasing to reflect market conditions, are the cook cashier, custodian, dishwashers, ELL tutors, food transporters, hot lunch kitchen staff, interpreters, kitchen helpers, lawn maintenance, print, print shop help, and the substitute dispatch. So I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Thanks for clarifying that. Any questions? For Dave? Seeing none. Then is there a motion to approve the substitute rates of pay that are attached on page 39, understanding that some are remaining the same and others are actually increased? Moved by trustee Wake. Is there a second? Seconded by trustee Sturbis. Is there any board discussion? Seeing none. Then any public comment? Seeing none. Then all the trustees in favor of approving the substitution rates of pay as established on page 39, please indicate by raising your hand. And that's unanimous as to all trustees present. And then we reach item number nine, which is the opportunity to provide public comment on non-agenda items, which we provide both at the beginning and end of meetings to accommodate schedules. Any public comment on non-agenda items? Seeing none. Then we're adjourned. Thank you so much.
Thanks.